It's seven o'clock already and we, we've got everybody back. So it's time to recommence. I assume everyone else is ready. Although I'm not now see, oh, there you. The tiles moved around on. Okay, I'd like to reconvene this regular board meeting of the Urbana Park District Board of Commissioners. We are returning from our executive session wherein we did a semi annual review of executive session minutes. And in our executive session, the board has approved minutes from the executive sessions of August 18, 2020 and September 17 of 2020. We furthermore agreed that we can release, having reviewed the semi annual unreleased minutes, semi annual review of the unreleased minutes, also agreed that we can make open to the public. The two sets of executive session minutes we just approved, namely August 18, 2020 and September 17, 2020. And lastly, the board has authorized the destruction of executive session recordings from March 12, 2019, to recordings from April 9 of 2019, and the recording from July the 9th, 2019. So we are now back to our regularly scheduled meeting. And the next item of business is to accept the remaining agenda for the evening. And I'm not aware of any desire to alter it. So is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Second, and that's been moved and segmented. Any discussion or questions on the point? Hearing none, again, a roll call vote in this remote world, starting with Roger.
Aye.
LaShonda.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I vote in the affirmative as well. So that carries unanimously with all five commissioners voting. At this point, we are to the public comment portion of our meeting. I don't see any tiles up here that would indicate somebody from the public wishing to address the board or. Have you seen anything there, Tim?
No, nobody from the public is at the curb facility.
And I don't see anyone else on this meeting. So I think we can slide by that. And we normally have new staff introductions, but I don't believe there are any of those this evening as well. Okay. That moves us on to the uptack report. But there was no December uptack meeting and therefore no report. That takes us to our consent agenda. And on tonight's consent agenda, our approval of the minutes of our December 1, 2020 study session. Approval of the minutes of the December 3rd, 2020 joint board meeting with Champagne Park District for the CU Special Rec. Approval of the minutes of the December 8, 2020 regular board meeting. The acceptance of our monthly departmental reports, namely administration, planning and operations and recreation. Approval of the monthly paid accounts payable. And lastly, action to accept the philanthropy report and gifts listed with gratitude. So it is under the our rules of the consent agenda, the purview of any single commissioner to remove any or all of these items from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. Is there any commissioner wishing to remove any of these items from the consent agenda? Seeing no indication of that, is there anyone prepared to make a motion that we approve all of the action items on the consent agenda and accept the information items in an omnibus fashion?
No move.
Second.
That's been moved and segmented. And under the rules of our consent agenda, at this point, there is to be no discussion. So we will move to the roll call vote, beginning with Roger.
Aye.
LaShonda.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I too vote in the affirmative. So that carries unanimously with all five commissioners voting. And that's excuse me, takes us up to our reports section of the meeting, starting with financial reports.
Hi, everyone. Hope you're all having a great night. I'll be reviewing the financial reports with you for the month of December for the Park District. I have them pulled up on the screen here so I can share with the audience that may be watching this later. The first report that I'll share with you, you guys can all hear me. Okay, right? Okay, I see Tim nodding. The first report that I'll share is called the Revenue and Expenditure Report. This is the first of two budget reports. And it shows the receipts and expenditures for the prior 12 month period and the budget for the current period and the preliminary unaudited results for the eight months ending December 31st, 2020. Someone, which is the first page of this report, is all funds except for the Capital Improvements Fund. Revenues for this period were $10,434,000, which is an increase of $1,154,000 since October, or excuse me, since November. 7.4 million is of the revenues were property taxes and we've received seven property tax distributions for the year 2019. The biggest difference between this year and last year has been our earned revenues, which is represented in this fees line. At this same point of May 1st through December 31st, 2019, the district had earned $891,000 in fees, which is made up of program revenues and rental charges. And at this point in the year, we're at 130,000, so 131, so about a $760,000 decrease from this same point last year. But we're all aware of that. So I just want to make sure to bring that up. That's the most major difference between these two years that we've been looking at. Moving down to the expenditure section, there were, there was 3 million, sorry. Total expenditures were $8,314,000, which is a change of 1 million. Am I looking at the wrong report? No, all right, sorry. Which is a change of $1,745,000 since November. 1.6 million of this was the bond and principal and interest payments that we made in December. And the other, and around 1.1,000 of it, 1,150,000 of it, excuse me, was from the general fund transfer to the bond fund, which really was used to make those bond payments. So you see that represented here under, partially under transfers out in this number. And then also under this bond principal and interest payments, which includes the payment that we made in June, interest payment we made in June, and then the principal and interest payments we made in December. We have a surplus after eight months. This means that there's an excess of revenues over expenditures paid of $2,120,000. This is just shy of a million dollars more than our performance at this same point in the year last year. So last year, we were at about 1.1 million in net revenue over expenditures. And I think that's almost entirely because we've really kept our expenditures under control with the COVID crisis. You know, with a lot of closures, we didn't have part time staff. And so while our revenues, year to year are lower, we also reduced our expenditures accordingly very well. So we did a good job responding to that crisis. So far. Moving on to page two, some two shows only the Capital Improvements Fund. And this fund for the eight months had revenues of $1,216,000 and expenditures of $1,671,000. Expenditures exceed revenues and this leaves a net decrease in fund balance in the Capital Improvements Fund of $455,000. And lastly, some three shows all the first two pages added together. It's the entire district. And our fund balance at the end of December is $17 million. And following that are the summary reports for the individual working, main working funds, recreation, general fund, museum fund and indoor pool. And I looked pretty closely at them this year and I, or this month, well, I do every month, but as I was looking close at them, one thing that I noticed, what that I thought was really interesting is that that reduction, that 760,000 less in fees that we've earned this year from the prior year is spread out really evenly among our working funds, like proportionally, I would say. So in general funds, you know, we're about maybe 10,000, 15,000 less than usual, but this is primarily just pavilion rentals, which there were actually, were still some over the summer. Recreation fund was down about 400,000 from the same point last year. And then museum and indoor pool were down about 150, 125,000, 150,000. That that's what gets up to that 760,000 figure. So but I just thought that was, you know, it's not all taking the hit in the rec fund. It's, it's spread evenly under all of our programs took that hit. And that kind of helps in the long run, balance out that fund balance equation too. It's not just one fund having to take the brunt of it. So if there's no questions about that, I can move on to the treasures report, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Okay, so the treasures report is a report of the amount of cash that the district has on one day, December 31st, 2020. All 24 funds are listed with where the cash is invested for a grand total at the end of December of $17,87,120.58. On the second page, the top section lists funds that we have in interest bearing accounts. We all know interest rates are really horrible right now. Illinois funds used to actually have a pretty competitive rate, maybe a year ago. And it's just, this gets worse every month. And same for a park pool too. This park pool money market account used to be pretty competitive compared to other vehicles. And now it's at 0.02%. But of the $17 million that we have, about 16 million is out in investments. The other million dollars is in our operating account to pay our bills. Not earning interest. The next section here lists inter fund loans. There were no changes to inter fund loans this period. And finally, the third page lists dispersments. Vendor payments in this section matched the paid accounts payable reports that were in the consent agenda. Total dispersments of funds for the month of December were $2,298,000. 1.6 million of that was bond payments, as you can see here listed. And also something else that was a bit unusual in December as we had three pay periods. And we had two other payrolls for our longevity and holiday awards. So, so we actually had five payrolls in December. So it was a little bit larger payroll than our usual this month of December. Three payrolls, three bi weekly payrolls is not unusual, but and the holiday and longevity pay always happen in December, but they just all coincided, the stars aligned for December to have them all happen at once.
I'm going to accept the treasures report for audit.
Second.
Has been moved and segmented. Is there any discussion or any questions on the point? Hearing none, let's again do a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
LaShonda.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I vote in the affirmative as well. And so that carries unanimously.
Okay, then I will move on to discuss the highlights of the capital budgets. So any budgets that had activity are notated with an asterisk. In the Series 2019 A Bonds, we had one line item of expenditure for design work on the Crystal Lake One Way Road System. In the 2021 budget, which is new, you guys have not seen this yet, this just got created. We had our bond proceeds were received and we paid a portion of the issuance costs down here in the expenditure section. In the 2020 budget, revenues were received for tributes. And also revenues were received from the Urbana Champagne Sanitary District's contribution towards the sanitary bridge as part of the CLP rehab project. In the expenditure section, under Operation Small Equipment, goose hazing lasers were purchased out of that line. And design fees were paid for the Blair Park Auslad project here. In the 2019 capital budget, revenues were received for the, the, well, actually they weren't even received. Revenues were recognized that were actually received in the prior fiscal year. I just finally did the adjusting journal entries to recognize the revenues for the Rock Riffles project and for the CLP Auslad project. Since the completion of that project was far enough along that I felt comfortable that we were going to be able to recognize all of that revenue at this point. And in the expenditure section, a portion of, another portion of the goose hazing went to this operation small equipment. It got split between those two years because this one got spun out all the way. So they moved on to the next year. And there was also spending on tributes and donations for tributes and the CLP Rock Riffle project. And finally, in the 2018 capital budget, expenditures occurred on construction crew projects. And a little bit of Liel Park was coded to the contingency line here down at the bottom. To finish that project out, there was no activity in the 2017 budget this period. That's all I have. And now Andy and Derek may have some updates for you on capital projects.
Thanks, Katie. I'll start with the Crystal Lake Rehab Project. Site's been pretty quiet for the time being. Keith from our staff construction crew finished the installation of the new playground equipment and is beginning to work on the surfacing at the playground today, actually. Our staff team is still working with ERA and Stark to finalize a few other items on the project that include revising the plaza area to improve accessibility. We're preparing for the installation of the boat dock and the replacement decking that kind of coincides with that portion. Stark's actually anticipating that we receive that boat dock later this month. So you might see it out at the park site here shortly. And then we're still working to do a revision to the makeup water pump to reduce the overall flow rate for that terrorist stone planted area near a sediment basin. So Stark still has some site cleanup and grading that they will be continuing as weather and conditions allow. We're also looking into ways to help prevent the throwing of rocks along the banks into the lake. We're putting up, you know, and getting some signs put out, but are also looking for ways to temporary block access to those areas before we start seeing the plantings establish in the coming year and the lake level cover most of those areas up. We talked a little bit about Blair Auslad. We were pushing to try to have the bid out this month. I think we're probably still on target to get it out here in the next week or two. We pushed back our bid a little bit on the project until we could get some more clarity on the status of state grants and funding. Kara reached out to our state grant administrator and received some optimistic news on the grant statuses and we're intending on meeting with Upland Design here shortly and probably extend our bid window from our typical 45 days till probably a 60 day period for us to award any contracts. Just to make sure we don't see any changes in state grant processing prior to recommending an award to the board. At the dog park, we're looking at doing a couple of small improvements in the coming months. First is to complete some ADA items within the entry of the log, large dog park area, adding a 20 by 50 foot concrete pad extension to what's already there. It's on that interior fence line. And then with that, we'll also do a replacement of the water fountain. And then kind of with that, that will resurface the parking lot and the drive down to the Perkins Road gate with recycled asphalt millings. And that material is considered to be a green alternative by the city. And the city uses it themselves for lots and some low usage drives. It also ensures that the area will be dust free compliant per city code, which has not been for a while now. And then just schedule wise, we anticipate the parking project probably move forward within the next few weeks. Probably have a closure, I would assume of at least a day. And I've been working with Judy to start preparing some messaging for the members. Once we have that schedule lined up, as far as the ADA improvements, we're probably looking at mid spring. It's going to be pretty heavily dependent on the weather. Last thing I'll mention is we have some upcoming vehicle and equipment bids. We've been moving on bidding two trucks, two wide area mowers. Hope to have that to the February board meeting with our recommendation. Most of these items are catching up on 2020 capital vehicle and equipment lines that we had to delay due to COVID. And we're beginning to move in our 2021 vehicles and equipment as well, which is going to include a three quarter ton tool truck, garbage truck and tractor with attachments. So those will be coming to the board in the next month and two months. And unless there's any questions, that's all I really have for tonight.
Andy, I wanted to clarify that the delay on COVID for vehicles was because of the production cycle, correct?
Yeah, they were, they were not accepting orders and they were not processing through their plants.
And I thought I'd give the board a little bit more background on Karis correspondence with IDNR. We inquired essentially about four different grants, the Crystal Lake Grant that's obviously been awarded. We've already received 50% payment upfront and we anticipate wrapping up this spring. We're just confirming they're still processing payments for that. And they said, we are, send it whenever you're ready. With the Blair project, we have signed paperwork. So our agreement is complete. We've signed it, they have signed it. And they typically provide that 50% upfront payment pretty early on. We wanted to inquire where we are in that process because we heard it could be, you know, last fall. She said that she was checking on, on where it is in the process, but she hasn't got a response yet. She'd be letting us know. So it appears that that's in good shape. And that's our comfort, comfort level moving forward with bidding it. The museum grant, the one that's going to pay for the outdoor learning education pavilion was the one that was announced. And we've signed our paperwork. Right now, it's been signed by legal and it's moved on to their chief financial officer, the director, and then we'll be moving forward with that project. So good news on all three grants have been awarded. We also inquired about the park program because we were just curious if there was any updates on that. Obviously it has not been announced or awarded. And the response we got is that she was not sure if the press release had been released yet to the awardees yet. So that's encouraging as well. It appears that the park grant, there may be an announcement coming in the near future. I know that Tim had some vault corresponds with IAPD as well, that that's similarly encouraging. Perhaps Tim, Tim, we're going to report on that in your director's report or?
Yes, I can mention it now though. Basically IAPD believed things would probably move forward. They haven't been told it's being swept or any sort of, you know, underhanded approach as compared to other past administrations. So while we don't know and there's not a yes or a list of awards, we're going to continue to believe it'll move forward.
And then Katie's mentioning of the, the, the goose lasers in the capital budget purchases might have raised some eyebrows or those were actually purchased earlier in the summer. And we had one that we'd gotten previously when we were trained on their use. It's a hazing tool that complements the work we do with, with our, our dog hazing. The one that we had, or we still have is, is, I guess I call it more of a entry level goose hazing laser.
For the geese?
What's that?
Is that for the user or for the geese?
For, for both. It requires that you have dusk or dawn conditions or very overcast conditions to be effective. And we've been using it in that regard. But with our commitment to manage the geese on the backend of the call, we wanted to get some, 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 some better hazing tools available to us, particularly on days when we don't have the dog service. And the, the, the new lasers are more effective. They, 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 they'll work under daylight conditions. And the dog service that we have been working with, sorry, the dog service that, that, that trained our dog service, the one that's out of the Chicagoland area, Wild Goose Chase, tells us that several agencies up north are, are using the, the lasers in order to reduce the cost of their dog service. The dog is, service is still important. But the laser is, is probably the next best tool available for hazing. So we've been using it with success and eager to continue to use it from this point forward.
So how, how does that work? I don't mean, you know, in terms of physics, but how do you utilize that?
It's, it's a very bright green laser. And the training is, is, is basically just be really careful. We, we appointed it. You would never point it in the sky. They're, they're, they're actually the potential that it could interfere with aircraft. And you start by pointing it kind of at your feet and slowly swipe it up across the water surface and you really just kind of bounce it around the, the, the feet of the geese and they're alarmed by it. Kind of goes back to those weekends that we, we tried when we first began our goods management approach. There's something about that, that, that flash, that glint, that, that, the theory is it relates to predator's eye, but it's incredibly effective. Ducks don't seem to respond to it. It's just the geese and they flush rather quickly.
So who, I mean, does somebody go out once a day, twice a day, different times of day? How does that, I mean, that's just somebody, we don't have somebody who does just irritating the geese.
No, no, no. Yeah. Matt and I both have a laser at this point. I've been going out almost daily. Just keeping an eye on things. And Matt's probably about the same, same, same frequency as I am. It's a good tool.
The fastest laser in the west.
I think that's it for the, the capital updates. Unless there's other questions.
Well, hearing none, I guess we're ready then to move on to the executive director's report.
Thank you, Michael. Well, starting out, hopefully you all had a chance to look at the You Belong Here report. I think you'll find a mixture of kind of, you know, larger agency moves, internal departmental moves, things that are happening at the program level. So again, open to feedback if there's anything that needs clarity or you would prefer to see or not see, just let us know. But we'll continue to add to this report again. I think we mentioned it may be larger or smaller depending on the activity that month. And then at the end, you'll notice there's a, a report from Chris Artifio, who helped us with our open positions, making sure that we were presenting ourselves and reaching outlets and, you know, conducting interviews and using rubrics and such in a more appropriate way. So I think she did a comprehensive review of her work. We're very pleased with that. I found it personally very helpful. And I think it's something that we can continue to use. So we agreed, we're going to focus on our next three open positions. And then as we go into the next available positions, open back our toolkits up and update those materials and, and keep that a continuous process. We didn't decide to go through and, you know, rewrite every position and get everything done because things change. Some jobs may not be open. It may be a many years before certain jobs are open if, you know, people stay in place. So we thought each time we had an opportunity, we'd go through that process and update things. So again, a very worthwhile, yes, questions?
I mean, I guess I just have a question or well, two, two comments. One, I really, I really appreciated all the information that was shared, especially the access to the Google docs and slides. It, it seems like it's, you know, she's doing great work and it looks like a very good fit for. docs and slides. It seems like it's, you know, she's doing great work and it looks like a very good fit for us. I guess I just wonder, I don't know, do we review? It was interesting to look at the sort of rewriting of job descriptions and I just wonder, is there an opportunity to even reframe some of the language internally so that it, because as she pointed out, it's not always just about hiring diverse groups. It's about hiring people who are open to working with each other. So just helping to change the language earlier, maybe something to think about.
Yes, and in that same mode, we want to talk with staff, you know, to really have that discussion. So again, as Meredith pointed out, maybe the concept isn't somebody high, highest score in every single, you know, DEI category, but more about their propensity, their interest, their ability to learn. You know, certainly some may come in with higher understandings, bringing it from different places or just having a different life experience. But certainly people that could, you know, show a propensity to, you know, work with us and work with our staff certainly wouldn't necessarily exclude somebody from consideration. So we thought that that was a really neat advantage of a system like that. And then again, discussing with staff, making sure, you know, review groups are aware of that and that they understand that. Hopefully that answered your question, Meredith?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just encouraging us to look at existing jobs and change, you know, the language as we can. To better reflect, so that it becomes more of a incremental change and I think that's often, and also it's, some of it is very subtle and people don't recognize that that's part of the problem, the challenge, right? That it is also very subtle.
Yes, I agree. I think all of us came away with that notion, some of it's very obvious and overt. A lot of it's very subtle and, you know, how do you find the differences?
What Meredith is suggesting is also good when we do our annual evaluations and people review their job descriptions to actually see the, any different language in it so that they are aware that this is where we are headed and make sure they're on board, you know, so. Just that subtle, this is, this is your job description is, I think what Meredith is getting at and that's a good thing. It costs money to do all those evaluations or job descriptions, so it'll have to be incremental, but I think the point is well taken that when we can do a few, then that's, that's a good thing.
It's also great to have a resource if we have questions, you know, during an interview or after or anticipating something. We know somebody that does that kind of work and would be a good connection. Any other questions on that report of the report? If not, I'll move on to the rest of it. Get my notes here. Starting out, as I often do, wanted to share a few thanks. Wanted to thank Kelsey Becku. She did a terrific job of putting our PowerPoint that we reviewed at the study session with our goals. We sit down and work with her, kind of identify and review the goals, but she'll pull that report together and I think we found it, it's very effective. It keeps us on track, focuses our discussion and I think it reemphasizes the most critical goals. Also wanted to thank Mark and Lexi for marketing. They completed the logo process. We have some nice new logos. I know that's very difficult work because it's very subjective. Everybody has their own opinions and yet they just worked through that, came up with creative images, gave staff and others a chance to weigh in. So we're really pleased and I think we have a really nice product out of that. Wanted to thank Katie and her staff. We received the GFOA Award, the Government Finance Officers Association Award for last year's financial reporting. While we think of it as a standard, there's a lot to it and we appreciate their, all their thought process and care that they put into that. And lastly, in that group, wanted to thank Cara Dudek. So nice to have a full planner onboard. She helps with master planning, site planning, natural resource planning, neighborhood planning. And most recently, that leads into my next topic, the City of Urbana is updating their comprehensive plan. They haven't updated that plan since 2005. So Karen and I met with the city staff, Andrew Rudy and Lily Wilcock, and began that process. Those are the cities to staff that'll be leading that process. Kara will be our interface. So what they really want to do is instead of trying to recreate the whole wheel, start to pull in the approved strategic plan parts of the local units of government in Urbana. So for example, our trails plan and all of our facility planning, park planning, we will be able to, you know, provide quite a bit of information. So again, to have Karen in place and have her be able to work back and forth is a real, real luxury and a real benefit to us all. Should mention with the comp plan, they're anticipating a lot of outreach opportunities. They would love to have our board get involved with any of the community opportunities to weigh in. So we'll keep everyone up to date on that schedule. But again, this is probably the 20-year plan going forward for Urbana. So making sure we spend time and we understand it, you know, or a part of it would certainly benefit us and the rest of our residents. Let's see, moving on, our staff core team completed our Urbana Park District Best Practices. That's our replacement for the IAPD's distinguished agency program. We meet each year, we spend a couple of meetings going through all of our year one, year two, or year three, things that go on cycle that have to be done annually, every two years or every three years. Identify those, discuss and update. And probably the greatest benefit, in addition to being compliant, is that we actually discuss it. We do planning and there's follow-up. Some things need action and attention. So I think if we were probably still doing the IAPD approach, it's usually a rush to just get it together and then file it and forget it. So I think we kind of put it to use and we have all the right people at the table. So it's a lot of creative thinking and problem solving as we go, and I really appreciate that. Makes our time well worth it. Quick update on arts and culture matrix. We have multiple projects in the works, some big things and small, but just wanted to mention a couple of things we learned. The Forty North will be joining with the Public Art League. I think the Public Art League is essentially going out of business, kind of joining forces with Forty North. They were the group that were providing public art in Champaign and other areas of the community. So certainly that's reasonable that more public art will continue in the area. And lastly, we're working already for the planned 2023 celebration of the 25th anniversary at the Wondell Sculpture Garden. So we're starting now to kind of create ideas, think about how we want to go about that process. So you'll be hearing more. That may sound like a long timeout, but I think we have some interesting ideas. And we have some other projects in the works. You know, we're already tracking Prairie Play, a few other park planning projects. So we'll have a busy next few years. But it should be fun and really powerful stuff. Quick update at the Wondell Sculpture Garden, our sculpture here and there that the board approved to be transferred to the Peoria Park District will be leaving tomorrow. There's a crew coming from Ottawa. And it'll work with our op staff overseeing it, will remove it from the park and take it on to Peoria. Corky and I had a very invigorating, new, interesting meeting today. We met with Dr. Neha Gotha from the kinesiology department. She's been working on a five-year study that's been funded by the National Institute of Health to really look at the benefits of exercise in older adults. So say 55 to 79. She would like to partner with us, perhaps use our facilities, any of our, you know, staff or, sorry, any of our participants that'd be interested. But they're looking for over this five-year period to reach out and connect with 170 participants. And the idea is pretty cool. They'll do, the ones that would agree and sign off would do a pre MRI. And what they do is scan your brain and they basically get a picture of that. And then you follow through your subsequent exercising programs for, you know, that duration of period, you know, set through the study. And then there's a post MRI and the idea is that they're looking for changes in the brain. The thesis or the premise is people that are more active, older adults that are active will have more intact, solid brain mass with less gaps. I'm only repeating what she told me, so I'm not trying to sound like a doctor.
You're doing a really good job, though. You sound just like her.
Well, it was really exciting because what we thought was what a perfect fit for the park district. Because, you know, we tell people all the time, hey, staying active and healthy is going to make you live longer. You'll have a more higher quality of life. You'll be healthier. But when you go to the research, there's probably less facts that can really point that out. So this would be an indicator. And here's the other interesting thing. They're going to look at three levels of exercise. One would be aerobic, so you're working and sweating a lot. The second would be yoga and mindful activities and the effect that provides. And the third, let me get to my notes, was in stretching and toning. So it's interesting, they'll be able to at least measure, you know, of those kind of different, are there differences? Are they the same? Or, you know, what can we learn from that? So again, we'll begin meeting Corky's got his staff that'll be meeting with that researcher and hopefully we'll get some things in place. Obviously, COVID is probably going to create some workaround, but it is a multiple-year study, so we're very excited. So probably one of the benefits of living and working in a university community, you can actually connect with research that might help people and that would help us and information we can share with others. We'd like to thank Dr. Laura Payne and the RST Department. She made the connection and she's always trying to integrate our local park and rec agencies with any research or efforts now that they're involved with. Lastly, I think we covered grants. And then last, we have the TIF Enterprise Zone meetings are being scheduled for early February. If you recall, historically, they were, from my perspective, always in December. So it's kind of a strange shift. I always liked it finishing at the end of the year, but they're scheduled now for early February. Date to be determined, so I can report back after that meeting. And I can answer any questions if you have a need. All right. Thank you, Michael.
Oh, thank you, Tim. Moving on to the president's report, reviewing upcoming meetings, the UPDEC meeting is on the 26th of January and they're proposing the climate plan draft to be the topic point for that meeting. For those who are going to be attending a soaring to new heights conference, that's the 20th to the 30th. Our next study session is scheduled for the 2nd of February. And we have two, what could be, I think, quite interesting things. One is the, the wage review or the, the, salary structure review for, for our staff that is underway and has been delayed somewhat by, by COVID. And also, we as a, as a board, looking at the, the draft plan, the climate plan draft. And on the 9th of February, we'll, should expect seeing the annual recreation statistics report. And if other things go as, as hoped, there should be bids on a, on a number of items on that 9th of February meeting. And the 23rd of February is also an UPDEC meeting. So that's about it for the president's report.
Are they going to do legislative breakfast?
Yes, it's, go ahead, Michael.
There's no date known for that. It's, I believe Champagne Park District is responsible for it this year. But exactly how they're going to pull that off, I think is unclear at this point. That's your understanding, Tim?
Yes, what I do know is each kind of region is assigned somebody from the joint Legislative Council or Committee, sorry, at IAPD, IPRA. And they then work with their local legislators on available dates. So I've seen a list of dates. They're probably trying to check with our legislators to see who's free on what dates. I think they're ranging from end of, very end of February through the first probably two weeks of March. So it's being narrowed, but we, Michael's correct, we don't have a date yet.
But the assumption is that it'll be a Zoom meeting, right? Not in?
I would believe so, Nancy. I can't imagine meeting in person and doing that. So yes, it'll be a little bit different. I joked we may be in our bathrobes and coffee, sitting around at our homes, so.
Right.
Okay. Moving on to Lea's on reports, the finance study group, we did meet last Friday. We have already covered some of the things that we discussed there in, in tonight's meeting, particularly the grant status being one of those. And also Katie's very careful review of, of where we are financially, given that we've had lower fee income, but also more expenses going forward. One of the things I'd like to share, though, with the rest of the board is, as part of that conversation, is the difficulty we're going to have, even though we're in theory a million dollars is kind of on reserve, better than we might have expected, that as we start to open up again and with all the uncertainties involved with that, just how hard it's going to be for staff to control costs and make them match with the incoming fees. And I think it's, at least it was from my perspective, and I think Rogers, as we were talking about this, it's, it's really important that we be prepared actually to take some chances financially to get ourselves back up and running. It's going to happen. And eventually, we're going to be back to normal. We just can't know exactly when that's going to be. And I think we may have to, to take, we, we, it's good that we have some cushion there. We're going to have to risk some of that cushion as we try to get things back and started. It's, it's my opinion and I hope the rest of the board is in agreement with that, that we want to encourage the staff to be very careful with the finances and at the same time, don't let worries about those be the thing that prevents us from getting ourselves back into normal operation as soon as we can. Because we're taking in tax money, we need to serve the public as soon as it is safe and prudent to do so. And we may take some financial hits along the way out of that cushion. So anyway, that's my little bit of the soapbox from the discussions that happened at that meeting.
Where do you think are the, the danger areas?
Well, you can spend, you can spend money getting a program set up and, and ready to run and all of a sudden, if a new, this new highly contagious form of the virus comes through and we end up back in a shutdown mode, you've already put out expenditures or you've collected people's money and then you got to refund it. There are all manner of difficulties that you can run in that way. Secondly,
I think we're, I think we're predicting too, that if we have some sort of like size limits for how many people we can serve at a time, that it'll, normally we would set our fees to cover the minimum of a group size, for example, for camps. But if the state's saying you can't have more than five people in a group, well, we're willing to go out there and say, we're going to staff this, but now our costs are actually going to be more than what we're going to bring in for the fee. And we just want to go into that with open eyes and know that's a possibility. And I think for the pool, the outdoor pool too is another big one because we, we know it already costs us money to operate the outdoor pool. And with COVID, you know, I mean, if we're in phase four, we might not be able to have public swim, but we can have rentals for up to 50 people. So we might be changing our business model to come have your rental of your party of 50. You know, we don't know, but that's going to be an expensive decision to make and, and we're pretty sure we're making it. I mean, that's the direction we're leaning towards. So we just know, you know, we've just got to be prepared that there may be some losses, but I think that we're prepared to accept that with how well we've performed this year in the circumstances we've been under, so.
Another, another example, Nancy, like for nadiators, I know you've got a lot of questions in the past about nadiator swim team. You know, before COVID, we had like 200 swimmers. So now, you know, with the restrictions, we may not be able to serve a full 200 swimmers. So there's just not enough lane space to, to make it happen.
Right, right.
And so the other thing is, like what was mentioned earlier is, you know, we've got a plan that we're going to get into a phase four mode. And so we're advertising part-time jobs and we're going to be training some job, people for jobs. And I mean, that's expense.
Right.
And last week, last week at the finance meeting, I was giving everybody, Mike, Michael and Roger the timeline for when we're going to open. Well, that's going to change at least another week now and that was just five days ago. So so we're kind of guessing when we actually get to another tier or when we get into phase four. We are at this point able to do a good job of, we're just moving, we're not allowing people to register because when they We are at this point able to do a good job of, we're just moving, we're not allowing people to register because when they register, then we have to refund, then that's an expense through active. And so, you know, we're, we're trying to be as accurate as we can be with that. But, you know, at the end of the day, at some point, we're going to get into a point where, you know, we're guessing.
True.
So.
And I think one, one other thing that we that we touched on was, was the reality that we may offer programs, we may hire staff to to staff those programs. And people still may not feel comfortable coming. And that that's a reality.
Good point.
Also, I'd throw in having consistent staffing. We could have intentions and an audience, but if your workforce is interrupted or redirected or becomes ill, that could force a closure or at least some sort of, you know, problem for that area.
And I think one other topic that came up is you, you got to take some chances here. You can't just, on day one, you raise them, hey, we're ready for all the part-time people to come back and expect them to come flocking to you. So you got to, you got to take some chances upfront, start recruiting the people back. We, we hire in terms of number of individuals, a lot more people in the part-time staff headcount wise than we do full-time. And, and we can't afford to forever shut off that spigot and expect them, the really important part-time staff to to be there and ready to go when we want them.
And the, in the big group, the aquatics group is, is a pretty slim group at this point. So we've got to start rebuilding that so that whenever we are able to bring more people in, we have the staff to to be able to do that and fill expectations.
Probably the good news is that our competitors and others will be facing the same challenges. So not sure any one group's going to get ahead above the others, but certainly being ready and engaged is part of our game plan.
Hey. UPD policy study group, is there anything to report there?
We are meeting February 9th before the actual board meeting that day.
Are there things to work on or are you just meeting?
Yes, we're, it's a annual review of various policies. I don't know that we have the exact or just going over chapter one of the board policy manual, so, which is.
Yeah, and there may be a couple other specific policy edits and changes that we want to discuss as well, but we're still putting together the agenda.
Yeah, it's just part of the best practices of reviewing things on on a regular basis.
Okay, we'll go on to Urbana Parks Foundation representative, Roger.
Yeah, we had a busy meeting with just to to kind of summarize a few important things. As you know, Ellen Kurzinoff is retiring. She's been the staff liaison to the foundation. And we were very happy to hear that Katie will be acting liaison until Ellen is not replaced, but there's a new person in that, in that position. So thank you, Katie, for being willing to do that. One of the things that's been bouncing around the foundation now for several months is the question of an endowment policy. And what should be the trigger at which they begin to share the interest with us? How high, how high of an interest, how high of an amount should it be in the endowment before that happens? So they're in conversation about that. I think that's going to keep going for for a while and I'll, I'll keep you posted when we know anything. Jake Wolf is the new chair of the nominating committee. I would encourage you, if you have someone that you would like to nominate for the foundation, to send nominees to Jake. And any information that you could supply him as to why they'd make a good foundation member would be helpful. But Jake is already in conversation with a couple of potential nominees. So I think if the board has people that we're interested in, we need to let Jake know.
And how's the best way to reach Jake?
That's a really good question.
We can send out his contact info. I think there's a roster of the foundation, we'll just send that out to you all.
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you. The the Barn Bash is not going to take place in 2021 either. The, the sense was that things are too uncertain to to make a commitment for for May of this year. By the time things are clear, and I don't even know that they'll be clear enough by May, but by the time things are clear enough, there's not enough time to get anything organized. So that has been moved to 2022. Both the band and the venue are open to that and didn't penalize us for that. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Roger. And the update planning study group, is there anything to report there?
The report I wanted to mention, we did meet a few months or not too long ago, a month ago or so to look at our next six months. But I was going to recommend we probably would want to meet again once we have kind of that list pulled together and maybe start looking at that second half of the year. I've already had a couple of ideas and requests. One would be, for example, the comprehensive plan. And we also may want to have the professor that we're working on that study to come in and talk and educate folks about all the benefits of exercising as an older adult and how that fits into our age-friendly programming.
Yeah, sounds like a good idea.
Okay, anything else on that topic? Hearing none, that moves us on to old business. And we did not remove anything from the consent agenda in the area of old business. So there's nothing to cover there since there was no other old business on the agenda tonight. So moving then to new business, action to approve resolution and agreement authorizing a one-year extension to the IGA between the Urbana Park District and the Urbana School District relative to the indoor aquatics center.
Michael, last week, early, we received draft extension, a one-year extension for the indoor aquatic center. So our hope was, we discussed it briefly at the finance committee, and the goal was, I think, to get it out, get it in the packet. And in the meantime, we would work with staff review, work with Matt to see if there was any concerns or any recommended changes. The suggestion was if there were no changes, we could put it on the agenda for approval or it could likely be tabled if people wanted more time. But essentially, it's a one-year extension and the same terms would apply. I think our staff team have reviewed it and I think we're supportive. Matt Dearing has reviewed it and had no issue with it. So we have it, really, it's the board's discretion. Think Carol Baker would, we really hope if we could approve it tonight, that would get it to them. And they could take action on it at their very next meeting that they have scheduled. So that would be the staff recommendation.
I mean, just to review. This is yet another thing where where COVID has gummed up the works a bit, if you will. I mean, the, the school board, the school district have been really behind the eight ball trying to deal with, are we going to do classes in person, we're going to do them remotely? I mean, they, they have been overly stressed with all that sort of stuff. And we've not had a small amount of such things on the park district side. The period that was envisioned to revisit the agreement itself is rapidly running out. And there's no realistic way to renegotiate or or rejigger any, any aspects of that agreement by April. I just, I think completely unrealistic in in my opinion. So I think that's the reason for saying, hey, let's, let's do a timeout for a year. Keep the agreement going as we have been.
That, that's exactly what what staff took to the school staff that are on the management team is just, you know, we haven't had time to really work through this. Would you guys be interested in just a extension of one year? Because that is an option in in our agreement that we have in place. And you know, take, take 2021 or until April, not till April, but this, this coming fiscal year to really look at the agreement and make sure everybody is still intact with what we're doing.
I don't, I don't see a problem, but just can you remind us, this is a five-year agreement? Is that prior? So we're extending it for sixth year?
For sixth year, yes, correct.
I think we went from a 20-year to a five-year.
I remember the last time we did this, it's hard to believe five years has gone by, so.
It does go fast, yes.
Yeah.
Well, I move to approve resolution and agreement authorizing a one-year extension to the intergovernmental agreement between the Urbana Park District and Urbana School District. You know, 116 for the operation of the Urbana Indoor Aquatic Center.
Second.
Well, okay, so it's been seconded and thirded. Is there any further discussion on the point? Hearing none, we need to do again a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
Mashonda.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I vote in the affirmative as well, so that passes unanimously with all five commissioners voting. And we have no action to take on any new business removed from consent agenda because there was nothing removed from it. So that brings us to the general comments from commissioners portion of our meeting.
I wondered if it would be possible for Derek and his group to put together a not particularly detailed, but you know, somewhat illuminating collection of information about how much money and time is being spent on the geese. Because I can, I'm still getting, I'm sure everybody else is, so I'm still getting emails. So I can, and I understand this is going to be an ongoing dialogue. And I think that most people pro or con don't have a sense of how much money we are spending on a monthly basis to manage the the goose population. I think they just think we're sitting back and, you know, going in and rounding them up and gassing them and not, not doing much else. So if we could have just, just a bare bones idea of how much, I mean, in a month, I don't know. I don't really care how it's put together, but I think that it would give us some talking points in trying to explain to people that we're not just sitting that we're doing things and that the things we're doing are, of course, the things that are being asked of us in all of these as to deleted emails. So I don't know, is that is that a big ask? Is that possible? I mean, I don't want to, I know everybody's really busy.
No, I, I would be happy to. And I think one of the really critical things to message is that it, it was never, we never thought it'd be a one and done situation. We realized that we're, we need to continue all the management efforts we've done to maintain a sustainable population moving forward.
Right, exactly.
I can project out what I think our annual costs will be based upon on that, on that. And when we applied for the the permit, we, we documented our historical costs as well. So we have all that data readily available.
Derek, when we documented for the permit, did we also have to document our, the official, the effectiveness of our strategies over the last 10 years?
We did.
In, in terms of to demonstrate that these were not working.
Yeah, yeah, we did.
Is that something that is available?
I can put it in this report. Absolutely.
I think that would also be helpful and especially if it's information we already have.
Right, yeah, yeah. I mean, if you, if you think about it, if you know, I realize that the laser is not an an ongoing cost because you buy it and you, and you use it on a monthly basis. You don't have to keep buying a new one unless you drop it in the lake or something. But, you know, if you thought about other places that that thousand dollars a month for the, because it is about that, right, for the dogs?
It, it varies through the season depending on how frequently we have the dog go out. Right now, they're not going out, but beginning in the spring will resume. And there's periods when you intensify your hazing right after the nesting season. Malt season is, is a time when you, when you increase it quite a bit, so.
Right, right. And I think people just don't have a, a sense of the, of the kind of money that's being spent. And if you, I, I would assume that if you asked some folks and said, would you like that money going to, you know, toward the geese? And, and, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Or would you like it going to, you know, new scholarships, just to, you know, really play on heartstrings? You know, there's, there's a lot of ways we could spend that, that money. And I realize that if you have 20 geese or if you have 200 geese, you still are having to do a lot of the same stuff. But I think that folks just don't have a a sense of how much money is spent on a monthly or annual basis.
Nancy, I think it's a good idea. And Derek and I were just talking about it before the meeting, just that concept of, you know, we're somewhat fortunate, challenged also as a local, you know, small unit of government. You know, we do have some resource, but everything that you do in that management strategy is costly. But the key point is then, how does that translate on to other land managers, homeowner associations, private businesses, what have you, that don't have that resource? I continue to advocate it's a federal issue. We need a federal plan. We also need a state plan. And I know that might be laughable considering all the other needs that we have across the, you know, federal government and the state. But my point is, it leaves each landowner vulnerable to all the cost, the management strategies with no coordinated effort that will guarantee it'll even get better. So again, I guess I'm saying you're likely maybe to, you know, spend a lot of money and maybe not have a lot of result, depending on what you do. So it is an issue and I think it should be discussed.
I drove by Kaufman Lake today and I'll bet you there were 100 to 150 geese.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, they were, it was beautiful. I hate to say it. Because they looked, they, they looked gorgeous, but you know, they're still pooping in the water.
Well, and another point worth putting on that list is the, the entirety of the lake restoration planning was heavily influenced by how are we going to deal with the geese humanely? To discourage them, overrunning the park completely. And so there was a lot of money spent both on design work and in construction work as part of this new project.
And I can't resist, but I have to add again, I'm not sure we're going to be able to identify the losses, meaning lost lake house business, lost visitorship of people just not coming. We know through comments that have been made, people have just stopped coming. So I guess I'd call the, you know, lost leads, maybe just untold. You, you don't know what could have happened or who you could have hosted.
Right, and I don't, I mean, I, I actually, I, I under, I understand that, but I think that people who are on the opposite side of the water in this don't particularly care about, about our losses. I don't think that that, that that's important to them, but perhaps, I mean, probably none of this is important to them, but I think it gives us good information for talking to folks about it, which I think is about the best we can do. Anyway, sorry, that was a lot for just a comment, but that would be a big help, I think.
Be very happy to do it. I think it's a, it's, it's timely and topical because I, I think that there's a resurgence of interest in the geese in the community. And we want to be able to speak to it, so.
Yeah, and spring is coming.
Any other commissioner comments? Well, seeing no indication of that, we have come to the end of our agenda. And I'd be happy to declare us adjourned and look forward to seeing you all on the second of February. Good night, all.